A quorum being present, I call the meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the May 9, 2022 Akushnet Town Meeting. My name is Les Staken, and I'm your town moderator.
A little louder, Les.
A little louder?
We can't hear you too good.
I don't want to have to eat this thing, but yeah. I've been informed that the warrant has been properly executed with return to service in accordance with our bylaws. I'd like to start by having the head table introduce themselves, the town officials.
Pam Labonte, town clerk.
Jeffrey Blake, town council.
Jamie Kelly, town administrator.
Kevin Gasper, board of selectmen.
David Derausch, chairman of the board of selectmen.
David Warnar, board of selectmen.
And now the town officials at the base of the stage, beginning closest to me.
Sue Delgado, finance committee.
Mike Boucher, chairman of the finance committee.
Pete Benoit, finance committee.
Eric Two, finance committee.
Robert Ferrera, finance committee.
Jasmine Benfado, treasurer collector.
Todd Hassett, interim town accountant.
It's at this time of the meeting we reflect on the passing of Jessica Rigo, our finance department employee, taken from us far too soon at the age of 35, our deepest sympathy to her family, friends, and loved ones. It is also a time of recognition for a man who has demonstrated exemplary service to the people of Akushnet. He has proven to be excellent at scheduling, prioritizing, and communicating with the inherent ability to adapt to changing situations. He has effectively managed time, resources, and maintained high morale with his team while achieving superior results. A true visionary, 14 years ago he was a major player in consolidating the fire EMT personnel to better serve our residents. This resulted in more timely medical care, saving countless lives, and greatly reducing the severity of sickness and injuries. He was instrumental in changing the method of battling fires, instructions with trust roots, saving the lives of both residents and firefighters alike. These tactics were adopted statewide as a result of his leadership. He chaired a multifaceted team to study the potential effects of the proposed Eversource LP gas tank expansion on Peckham Road. Akushnet has been extremely fortunate to have a man of this caliber, one who remained calm and resolute while the storm and the pandemic swirled around us. Akushnet residents were provided with weekly updates, shot clinics, calls to their homes with progress or the lack thereof. Always a deep concern for the people of Akushnet, cautionary tales when we needed it, and congratulations and encouragement when progress was noted. We were provided with so many resources during this pestilence that people from as far away as Worcester, Springfield, and the state of Maine traveled great distances to avail themselves of what we were provided due to his leadership. Chief Galga, please stand and be recognized. We wish you a long, happy, healthy retirement. Thank you for everything, sir. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't take pause to recognize and commend your former selectman and moderator Roger Cabral for his invaluable assistance in helping me prepare for this meeting. I trust you will afford me an appropriate measure of patience and forbearance in the event an unusual situation arises. In that event, I would choose to seek the advice of town council or other subject matter experts to correctly address the issue than rush and make an erroneous decision in an attempt to save time. Thank you for your consideration. Now, we understand and appreciate you all have busy, demanding lives, and we thank you for the privilege of your time. Open town meetings like this are the epitome of freedom of speech and democracy. Each and every one of you tonight will have the opportunity to question, comment, amend, modify, and ultimately approve or reject each article in a $33 million budget. This is your meeting and your tax dollars. Your participation is not only encouraged, it's your absolute right. I'd like to start before we get into the articles with some housekeeping items. Please note the center floor is reserved for registered voters in town and Akushnet department heads only. Each registered voter was presented with a green card upon entering, and those cards will be the only means of voting tonight when raised to be counted. Kindly?
Mr. Moderator, we still have half the meeting out in the hallway. I really think we should close this one time.
I'll take a brief recess. Just knowing the people that were here on time, I didn't want to penalize them.
I agree with you, but a lot of these people were here at 10:00 and then just waiting their turn in line.
I'll leave it up to the folks who are here on time. As Bill Belichick said, "On time is 15 minutes early." How many of you residents seated here right now want to wait for the people outside? I'll leave it up to you. Okay, we'll take a brief 10-minute recess. Thank you. Please note the emergency exits closest to you in the event of emergency. And if anyone needs to use the restrooms, they're in the hallway to my right. Now, I'll go through what I call a process summary, so you'll know what lies before you. I won't be reading warrant articles verbatim, but will provide a summary of each. You have the full text on the handouts you were provided when you signed in. If you would like to speak on an article, line up at the microphone. Nonresidents will not be allowed to speak unless they are department heads or town employees, or A) after all registered voters who wish to speak have spoken, or B) if the registered voters in town agree to let nonresidents speak. Fair enough. When recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name and address before speaking, and you have the absolute right to understand what you're being asked to vote upon. These articles are written to comply with the law, and the full intent of the article may not be clear to you. If it's not clear to you, it's probably not clear to a fair number of people as well. Everyone here is entitled to question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question that is asked. Procedurally, all questions shall be directed through the moderator to maintain decorum and make efficient use of our time. You are to speak only to the motion at the moment. Rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting efficiency. Please remember there's a distinct difference between questions and answers and debates. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice until all who wish to speak have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. Lastly, all votes are final. Votes are taken, and we move on. As evidenced by past practice, we do not reconsider votes here. Reconsideration would be appropriate only if there were errors or omissions of material facts, or if we learn of some critical information that was not previously available when the vote was originally taken. And now finally, we'll get to the warrant. Article 1: To see if the town will accept the reports of its officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the 2021 annual report or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? I move the town vote to accept the reports of its officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the 2021 annual report. Do I have a second? Any discussion? This is a simple majority vote. Hearing no discussion, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 1, show of hands. Raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 2: To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $86,069 to be added to line item 010-4423-529000. Snow removal ice control, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate $86,069 to line item 010-4423-529000. Snow removal ice control and to fund said appropriation, transfer the following sums from previously approved articles of prior town meetings as follows. Gatsby Study: $1,267. Gas Boiler: $14,000. Waging Class Study: $10,800. HR Consultant: $1,500. Industrial Appraisal: $15,052. Construction Bylaw: $25,000. FEMA Match Apparatus: $15,000. New Loader: $3,450. For a total of $86,069.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
The finance committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, is this verified for this year's snow removal?
Yes, it is. Any further discussion? Now, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please raise your green card. Those opposed? The article passes with opposition. Now, the next eight articles, Articles 3 through 10, are what we call the consent agenda. And these are articles that, absent any objection, I will aggregate, they are considered routine annual articles that enable the town to do business, boil it, plate it, if you will. This is being done for the efficient use of time. I propose we vote on them together. Anyone objecting to an article being included in the group or feels it should be considered individually, please state "hold." We will then vote on articles together, not held, and return to any held article for discussion. Article 3: To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum or sums of money from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. PEG stands for Public, Educational, and Governmental. This is your cable TV network. The sum of $190,000 for the expenses of public access as follows. Salaries and wages: $90,000. General expenses: $100,000. Total: $190,000. The sum be raised from cable franchise fees and cable-related revenues in the amount of $190,000, or take any other action thereon. Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
Consent.
You're going to do them all?
You're going to read them all?
You're going to do Article 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10?
Article 4: See if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for state or federal grants and to expend any monies received as outlined in the appropriate grant application, or to take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article 5: To see if the town will vote to accept and expend any sum or sums of money that may be available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, for Chapter 90-type construction improvements and/or reconstruction of public ways and associated equipment, and to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into contracts relative thereto, and to appropriate said sum or sums in anticipation of reimbursement from the Commonwealth, or take any other action thereon or in relation Article 6: To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer, with the consent of the board of selectmen, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. There is a typo on your warrant article. It should be 2022. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 17, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article 7: To see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the cemetery board to perform work in the cemeteries and to allow the board of selectmen to determine the compensation to be paid to send members, or take any other action thereon or in relation Article 8: See if the town will vote to authorize the members of the recreation commission to perform work in the park and to allow the board of selectmen to determine the compensation to be paid to send said members, or to take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article 9: To see if the town will vote to allow the board's library trustees to sell for the sum of $1 the discarded books and periodicals of the Akushnet Public Library to the Friends of Akushnet Public Library, a nonprofit library support group, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article 10: To see if the vote will vote, town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to set the limits on the total amounts that may be expended in fiscal year 2023 from each of the town's revolving funds established under the Akushnet general bylaws, Article 21, revolving funds, as set forth below, or take any other action thereon.
Hold. There's a question you can ask me now.
You may have other questions you want me to...I will hold it for you.
I just have the one question.
Please, please. Mr. Rockliff, please.
All right. One more.
Former selectman.
Well, maybe you are, but I'm not sure everyone can hear you.
People tell me I am. The question is recycling. I just want to know if that's like the heavy pickup? Are we thinking about doing a heavy pickup, or is that a completely different line item?
Completely different line item.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to hold it now. Thank you.
There may be a hold on some other items. Authorize the spend from the recycling fund, Public Works, $10,000. Conservation Revolving Fund: $2,500. Parks and Recreation: $12,500. Council on Aging: $30,000. Having gone through Articles 3 through 10, there are no holds currently. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Articles 3 through 10, the so-called consent agenda as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends these articles, unopposed.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, Articles 3 through 10, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Articles 3 through 10 pass with opposition. Article 11: To see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws, to establish a health insurance stabilization fund for the purpose of paying for costs associated with providing employee health insurance and health reimbursement accounts for future fiscal years, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 to the said stabilization fund, or take any other action thereon. Our health insurance provider has predicted large future increases in health insurance costs, and this is a prudent, considered a prudent business practice to establish a health insurance stabilization account to assist in spreading out these costs over the years. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to establish a health insurance stabilization fund for the purpose of paying for costs associated with providing employee health insurance and health reimbursement accounts in future fiscal years, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 to said stabilization fund.
Do I have a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your green card. Yes, this is a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Those opposed? The article passes, two-thirds majority with opposition. Article 12: To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a stabilization fund for accrued liabilities. This is for compensated absences for payments in future fiscal years of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to any employee of the town upon the termination of the employee's To simplify this, this fund allows the town to proactively plan for retirements and for contractual retirement obligations outside of the operating budget, and to do so authorize future payment for compensated absences upon the termination of the employment from the reserve fund from free cash, the sum of $50,000 to said reserve fund, or take any other action thereon. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to establish a stabilization fund for accrued liabilities for compensated absences for payments in future fiscal years of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to any employee of the town upon the termination of the employee's employment, and to authorize future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due any employee to the town of the town upon the termination of the employee's employment from the reserve fund for accrued liabilities for compensated absences, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to said reserve fund.
Do I have a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Yes, sir. Please approach the microphone, state your name and address.
Roy Joseph. In the past, on all the articles, we always got the finance committee's recommendation. We're supposed to have two-thirds vote on these articles, and I personally would like to know how the finance committee feels about each one of these articles.
Well, I can certainly do that. We typically just ask for the finance committee's recommendation on things that involve dollar expenditure.
Well, I've been coming here for years, and this is the way I've always seen it done.
How does everyone feel about that? You want the finance committee's recommendation on every article?
They just gave it. They just gave it, right?
Mr. Moderator, if may I?
Yes.
I don't have a problem addressing each article so long as the finance committee made a recommendation on it.
I'm not trying to abuse the article. I'm talking about the original man who filed it.
Are you referring to the 3 through 10 that we all put together?
And the finance committee?
Yes, yes, we did.
Thank you. This is also a two-thirds vote. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your green card. Looks to me like these articles pass unanimously. Article 13: To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a stabilization fund for stormwater management operations and the cost of services for compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to said reserve fund, or take any other action thereon. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to establish a stabilization fund for stormwater management operations and the cost of services for compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to said fund.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. Everyone in favor of Article 13, please raise your green card. This also is a two-thirds majority. Those opposed? Those opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article 14, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $160,000 to the General Stabilization Fund or take any other action thereon. The stabilization fund that the town needs to maintain an amount between four and 10% of the total projected general fund revenue for the next fiscal year. The General Stabilization Fund should be between four and 10. We are a little bit over 10.05. But putting money in this account will assist the town in maintaining its current bond rating of AA. Is there a motion?
I'm, well, sorry, Dave. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $160,000 to the General Stabilization Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article 15, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 to the Capital Expense Stabilization Fund or take any action thereon. This is intended to defray future infrastructure repair, renovation, and construction costs as well as engineering and planning expenses. Again, the monies in this account assist the town in maintaining its good bond rating. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 to the Capital Expense Stabilization Fund.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to provide, you know, some explanation to the towns, to the voters here tonight. You're seeing a lot of money move into different accounts. What we're trying to do is making sure that we're really prudent with how we spend our money. We're not just, you know, taking a willy-nilly approach. We're banking money. So when the time comes to make expenditures on big-ticket items for capital of improvements, we will have the money there and then we can use the, take a big-picture approach as we look at our budget. So what we're doing tonight really is being very fiscally conservative with our, with our money by putting this, you know, our money into these different accounts.
Thank you, Mr. Wohner. Is there any other discussion?
Harry Rockliff, 74, Huckleaway. It's beautiful that we're saving all this money and everything, but if just these couple of articles right here, if you go through it, there's like over $1.3 million. If you wanted to give the taxpayers a cushion and a break and be fiscally frugal and do a Proposition 2 and 1/2 underwrite, it'd cost you around $450,000 to $500,000. More than enough money here, so we're being taxed, overtaxed.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please raise your green card. This is a majority vote. Those opposed? The article passes with opposition. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $400,000 to the OPEB trust account or take any other action thereon. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employee Benefits, and it's to be invested and solely utilized for payments to defray the cost of the town's OPEB liabilities. Again, it shows financial responsibility and stability to the bond and credit rating agencies, which if we need to borrow money, we pay a reduced interest rate. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $400,000 to the OPEB trust account.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article, unopposed.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Please, please approach the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
Hi, Cheryl Hall, 58 South Main Street. This may not be impactful, but it's a runoff sentence at the end, so I don't know what it's supposed to say. So I'm not sure I can vote on something that ends with "the latest."
I believe that's with the, the amount, if the $400,000 is put in, that says $932,648.58 would be the latest number. That's what we actually would have in the account, so roughly $1 million. I know.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Now we're going to get into the Article 17, which is the overall budget for the town. I'm going to take a motion for the budget as a whole, and I will then read each budget line item with the Finance Committee recommendations. If you wish to discuss any particular budget, please raise your hand and say "hold" when I read that budget. We will return to all held budgets once all proposed budgets have been read. You do not need to identify yourself to hold a budget, but be prepared to comment when called upon when we return to that budget. You have the individual line item sheets that were provided or at least available to you when you signed in or checked in at the table. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to the provisions of the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 41, subsection 108, or any amendments thereto, to fix the salaries of all elected officials to fund collective bargaining agreements for fiscal year 2023, and for the maintenance of the several departments of the town and for other necessary charges in accordance with the amount recommended by the Finance Committee as shown in the final column of the warrant, and to fund said appropriations transfers from available funds and raise and appropriate as follows. Taxation, $20,931,283. Projected state aid, $8,59,992. Estimated local receipts, $3,755,663. EMS reserve receipts, $513,938. Water surplus fund, $60,000. Debt premium, FB, $1,550, for a total of $33,322,426.
Thank you. I will now read all the line items by department. Do I have a second? I will now read the line items for each department. And if any of you, as I mentioned earlier, would like to hold, to discuss, just yell out "hold" so I can hear you. Reserve fund, $150,000. Town meeting election, expense total, $14,280. Moderator, salary, $725. Expense, $150. Moderator total, $875. Selectmen, salary total, $249,91. Expense, $26,800. Selectmen total, $275,891. Finance Committee, salary, $3,500. Expense total, $400. Finance Committee total, $3,900. Accountant, salary total, $155,417. Expense total, $52,150. Accountant total, $207,567. Assessors, salary total, $118,595. Expense total, $61,620. Assessors total, $180,215. Treasurer-collector, salary total, $173,837. Expense, $52,800. Treasurer-collector total, $226,637. Town council, legal expense, $67,500. Land court expense, $17,000. Town council total, $84,500. Technology, salary, $20,300. Expense, $121,800. Technology total, $142,100. Town clerk, salary total, $138,225. Expense, $4,552. Town clerk total, $142,777. Board of registrars, salary, $13,060. Expense, $11,994. Board of registrars total, $25,054. Conservation Commission, salary, $59,525. Expense, $25,000. Conservation Commission total, $84,525. Soil Board, salary total, $1,900. Expense, $200. Soil Board total, $2,100. Planting Board, salary total, $73,300. Expense, $6,000. Planting Board total, $79,300. Board of Appeals, salary total, $3,000. Expense, $3,150. Board of Appeals total, $6,150. Town Buildings, salary, $106,323. Expense, $110,500. Town Buildings total, $216,823. Yes, sir. General Government total, $1842,694. Public Safety, Police Department, salary, $2298,500. Expense, $361,510. Police Department total, $2660,010. Fire EMS Department, salary total, $910,733. Expense, $166,419. Fire Department total, $1077,152. Building Department, salary, $134,889. Expense, $28,840. Building Department total, $163,729. Sealer, weights and measures, salary, $1,169. Weights and measures total, $1,169. Emergency Management, salary, $3,799. Expense, $14,850. Emergency Management total, $18,649. Animal Control, salary, $50,168. Expense, $6,740. Animal Control total, $56,908. Forestry, salary, $1,000. Expense, $16,000. Forestry total, $17,000. Public Safety total, $3,994,617. Education, Old Colony Regional, $2282,455. Accusative School Department, $15,842,118. Education total, $18,124,573. Public Works, Highway, salary, $407,107.
Uh, question, if I was to hold, I want to hold for a heavy pickup. Do I want to hold for Public Works Highway, or do I want to hold for CMAS?
I'd have to refer that to either someone from the Public Works or the town administrator.
I don't care which one I hold, but I'm going to hold on.
We have articles that we're working on, past articles, that still have money in it for a heavy pickup in the fall.
Talk about that when I hold it. What do you want me to hold, Public Works or CMAS?
CMAS.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Public Works, salary, I may repeat myself, $407,107. Expense, $545,700. Public Works Highway total, $952,807. Snow and Ice, expense, $110,000. Street Lighting, expense, $20,000. Street Lighting total, $20,000. CMAS, salary, $39,963. Expense, $1,122,523. CMAS total, $1,162,486. Cemetery, salary, $5,464. Expense, $1,325. Cemetery, $6,789 total. Water Reserve Fund, expense total, $60,000. Water Fund Reserve Fund total, $60,000. Public Works, Water. Public Works water salary $199,955, expense $1,444,300, Public Works water total $1,644,255. Water debt retirement expense $206,992, and that is the same figure as the total, $206,992. Public Works total $4,163,329. Human services border health salary $170,646, expense $29,375, border health total $200,21. Council on Aging salary $140,374, expense $22,740, council on aging total $163,114. Veterans salary $20,772, expense $226,445, veterans total $247,217. Human Services total $610,352. Culture and Recreation salary $224,542, expense $63,237, library total $287,779. Recreation salary $10,000, expense $13,893, recreation total $23,893. Box department salary $29,000, expense $19,667, box department total $48,667. Historical Commission expense $7,000, total $7,000. Miscellaneous salary $10,000, expense $11,973, miscellaneous total $21,973. Yes, sir. Culture and Recreation total $389,312. Debt service debt retirement principal expense $277,000, that's the same total, $277,000. Debt retirement interest expense $113,413, the total was $113,413, the debt service total $390,413. Non-departmental, these joint accounts pensions expense $1,828,836, total $1,828,836. Insurance expense $1,978,300, that is the same figure for the total, non-departmental total $3,807,136. The general fund total $33,322,426. Now I will return to the held articles, beginning at the first held.
Guy Rock, 74 Mac Way. So we passed a bunch of articles before we started working on this one, and we started a bunch of stabilization funds to pay people sick time, their retirement benefits and all that stuff, yet when we moved into the beginning of the towns article, we still kept a reserve fund at $150,000. I'm pretty sure when I did this before, like sometimes when somebody retired, we went to the reserve fund, signed off as a selectman, and that's where they got their money from. So if you've started all these other funds to fund these other funds, why do you still need $150,000 in the reserve fund? Are you just anticipating that that'll roll over into free cash next year and we'll be off and running again? Or would it be fair to say that the philosophy there, the town of Acushnet is tax to the max and give nothing back?
Is there any other discussion? Could I refer that to gentlemen, Town Administrator?
The reserve fund pays for a great many things other than compensated absent balance, and as such, it is an account that could be accessed for a number of reasons. For example, if we have two apparatus that go down at the same time, and we need to go to the reserve fund for $40,000 to fix those two apparatus, which is happening now, we can do that. It is a safety net for the town.
Mr. Moderator, if I can speak. The last thing we want to do in this town, on the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, is overtax our residents. I'm one of them. I don't want to pay more tax than I'm supposed to. We are not trying to overtax people here. We're trying to make sure that we can provide quality services within the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and not above that. So we are not overtaxing people.
Is that, excuse me, Mr. Rockliff? Excuse me, Mr. Rockliff, is there anyone else that would like to speak before Mr. Rockliff takes the mic?
Now, other than, there's a couple of typo errors in here, especially like where you used the word pension a couple of times, but I went right down every department request and every FinCom request, and we just went through $33 million, and the FinCom did not disagree with any department.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'll add to that. Mr. Rockliff, we on the Finance Committee spend a lot of time going over the budgets. We work with each department to make sure that our employees are compensated appropriately and to make sure that the town residents have services that we need. We are not trying to overtax or pull the wool over anybody's eyes, as you're implying.
Can you tell me how many members have signed a union contract that work for the town right now that were not going to be back here at special town meeting closing? Because you said, you just made the comment that you want to make sure everybody's paid fairly, but I don't think you got anybody under negotiation, any contracts resolved right now. They were all open, are they not?
That may be something for the Board of Selectmen to answer.
That is correct, that is correct, Mr. Rockliff. There has not been one union or department ed contract that has been ratified in this budget process. You are absolutely 100% correct.
So then if you think zero is paying your employees fairly, that was an unjust comment.
Mr. Moderator, look, Mr. Rockliff, if you want to sit in this seat next year, you can certainly do it.
Is there any other discussion with regard to the reserve fund? Next item held was selectmen.
Hi, Brittany Batello, 185 Hathaway Road. I'm five feet, bear with me. While I'm cognizant of the fact that it must be very difficult to work an entire year and not get a raise, I have great difficulty passing and voting on the selectmen to receive a $15,000 raise when many other departments are going without a raise. The veteran service officer isn't getting a raise, and my second hold is police, not police, excuse me, fire and EMS that had a reduction in salary. So I'm just wondering how the $15,000 raise came about for the selectmen when other departments clearly have to work at the same amount of compensation.
Mr. Moderator. So the selectmen didn't get a $15,000 raise. In 2012, two years after I was elected, I cut my pay in the Board of Selectmen's pay by 10%, and we've never taken a raise since then. I believe the money that you're talking about is in the Town Administrator's line item, in which case we went a little bit above where we were based on the years of experience of Mr. Kelly for room for negotiation with him prior to where our current Town Administrator was being paid at. That's the difference I believe you're talking about. The Board of Selectmen have not taken a raise in a dozen years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Do you want me to come back for fire and EMS when it's time?
Is there any other discussion with regard to selectmen? Next item held, town buildings, who would like to speak on that?
I just want an explanation as to what we're going to do with the old library. If any of this funding is part of maybe rehashing that building? Or are we planning on selling that building? Are we just going to let it sit there like it's sitting? Is there any plan for the building, is basically what I want to know, the old library on Main Street? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. Rockliff, plan as it stands right now is to put an article forward at the Fall Town Meeting and sell the library. Any other comments regarding town buildings?
Mr. Moderator, if I could add just one more comment to Mr. DeRocci's comment. So that discussion's yet to be had, but I believe when we've had discussions in the past, Mr. Rockliff, you were on the board when we were trying to do veterans housing over there, and it proved to be just too expensive to bring in veterans housing over there with a gentleman from Natopoisie that was leading that off. So I think that the discussion would be more with the townspeople, that we would do a historical restriction on the deed to keep the facade looking the same way and try to go out with a minimum bid, if that's how we were disposed of that property, to try to keep it in the same historical value of the nature of it, the outside, is it now? That's for further discussion with the board and the townspeople.
Any other discussion regarding town buildings? The next hold is the Fire EMS department.
Brittany Batello, 185 Hathaway Road. So before I ask my question, if you want to clarify where that $10,000 decrease in salary came from? Because I don't want to misspeak for fire and EMS.
I'm sorry, what line item are you talking about, in the fire department, fire EMS? So there's been a reduction in the fire chief's salary because an outgoing fire chief with Mr. Gallagher, 35, 37, I'm counting, 35, 37 years of experience? I'm sure that we're not going to be hiring a new fire chief with a lot less experience at that same salary. And there was some, there was some negotiation with the current fire chief to get us to a certain spot for his, setting up for his retirement and merging the two fire and EMS budgets together. That's what I was part of with Chief Gallagher in the union. So that's where that reduction in that department came from.
Certainly, and I can appreciate that. But what I'm wondering is how many additional calls did they respond to this year? Could increasing their salary have actually brought on another public servant to assist and answer 911 calls? How frequently are we calling out to another town for assistance? So while we, the new chief certainly will make a lesser salary than the standing chief, was there room for increase for the other members? Was there room to add on another member of the department, another call firefighter, another EMT?
So I think, and I won't talk, speak for Chief Gallagher, but I know what I know. And I think that if there was ever a need for increased staff in the past years, Chief Gallagher would have came to the Board of Selectmen and made that request, and that would have been in his budget in prior years. So we're waiting for the new chief to come on board, get himself situated, and who knows what's going to happen and what the needs are of that department are going to be at that time, and that's up to the Board of Selectmen to make that judgment call. But we are looking for more call firefighters, perhaps EMTs, I don't know until we get a new chief in. But right now, there has been no request from our current fire chief for any additional staff.
But how would we afford additional staff if the budget's been cut? So you're saying they'd have to wait for the next fiscal year for that request? And then I have one more. Can I ask the chief if the number of calls, chief? I'm good, how are you? Could you speak to the number of calls, COVID calls? You know, I'm sure calls have gone up.
Yep, call volume did increase last year. We are about 1,100 total calls between fire and EMS. And if I can expand a little bit on the, on the budget, the Board of Selectmen reduced my request for the fire chief salary line item. I had requested that it be level funded so that they could enter negotiations with my successor and decide, obvious, you know, there seemed to be an interest in bringing that salary lower. But I thought I was doing my due diligence by level funding that amount so that they would have an opportunity to then sit down with the incoming chief and negotiate. But they decided to take a different track. In the salary line item for members, as was previously stated, there is zero increase because, for the full timers, because no contracts have been negotiated. There's a zero increase for our call members because there's been no cost of living adjustment approved yet. We understand that's going to be coming possibly in the fall. So that's why that number is level funded. What we did do was increase the amount of pay for the part-time EMTs to bring them to parity with the call firefighters. They were making about $1.50 less per hour. They provide a tremendous service, they expose themselves to risk, and I thought it important on my way out the door to make sure that the call firefighters and the part-time EMTs were paid the same hourly rate. Now, if that rate increases, it will be in the fall when the other non-union personnel in the town receive a cost of living adjustment. So Brittany, I hope that answers your question, ladies and gentlemen. If you have any questions, please let me know. Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there any other discussion regarding the fire EMS budget? Next item held was snow and ice.
Well, there was some talk, Guy Rock of 74 Mac Way, there was some talk about taking over South Main Street at Candidates Night. So I just want to know the future plan of the town. If we take over South Main Street, are we going to maintain it to the level that we maintain Main Street and Middle Road? Or are we going to maintain it to the level it's being maintained now for snow and ice removal? And if so, then I think we should also maintain Main Street and Middle Road that way so it's fair for everybody in town. And I just don't feel that that number is going to be anywhere as close to a true number when that happens. I know it's not for this year, and I know I'm putting the cart ahead of the horse. I just wanted to engage in some conversation if we have made I just wanted to engage in some conversation if we have made plans for that. Thank you.
Hey Gary, you said it right. It's, we're in the, it's like literally the first pitch of the first inning of opening day on the discussion of South Main Street. It's a long way away. And any discussion or ultimate decision on the taking over of South Main Street would be, have to be decided here at town meeting. And if the towns residents didn't feel it's a good deal, then it wouldn't happen. So, great question, but it's probably a question for maybe November or next year or the year after.
Well, Mr. Rockliff, as I mentioned, as you said and said correctly, it was brought up at Candidates Night. The town has been notified by the state to see if we're interested in taking over South Main Street. As Mr. Monas analogy of the first pitch, that's true also. We received a letter. They're asking us if we'd like to be involved in the design of the road as far as infrastructure or sidewalks or lamp posts or that sort of thing. Um, with the infrastructure. And the process is a five to seven-year process to get us to that point of taking it over. So, you know, I maybe say that this is a thing for the future. But at this point, it's five to seven years off if we do agree to take the road over. This is just the preliminary discussion that's happened. So I don't think people should get all concerned that next year the town's going to be taking over the, the, uh, South Main Street because that's not true. It's a five to seven-year process to get to the point where the townspeople will come in here again and vote on it. So it's up to the people to ultimately decide what happens. Thank you. There any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Next item held, CMAS.
All right, CMAS. The only reason I held it is we haven't done a heavy pickup in six years. I did look through your articles for the rest of the town meeting. I didn't see anything that pertained to the heavy pickup unless I'm in error. I just want to know if the funds that are being provided for in this particular article could possibly produce a heavy pickup. I think the residents would like it, to be honest with you. I think a lot of us, especially with COVID and everything and cleaning everything up, I think people are sitting on a lot of trash and would like to get rid of it.
Thank you, Gary. Just so you know, at the last selectmen's meeting, the board voted, voted to make heavy pickup a priority when the funds become available. We believe that that'll be the case in late summer, early fall. So the Board, the Board of Selectmen voted to make that a priority.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gary?
We have, town meeting has approved two previous articles. One on 1116, special town meeting. The other one on 519, annual town meeting. One was in the amount of $12,801. The other in the amount of $7,607 for a large item pickup. And that's been something that Mr. Rockliff instituted several years back. And then we went forward with those articles again to get money appropriated. And the townspeople were great enough to allow us to do the heavy pickup. We ran into COVID-19 and there was reasons why we couldn't go out and pick up people's stuff. So we reopened that dialogue, as Mr. Monas said. And we will be out there, I believe it will be through our DPW going out and picking up. And that discussion said, well, allow three items per household to pick up on that large item pickup. And we will make that announcement to the public way prior to doing it. And it was every Saturday for three Saturdays. And we would do different areas of the town because our DPW is a small universe. So the manpower is difficult and that's why we were breaking into three different Saturdays based on areas of town where we would do the heavy pickup. So we will be doing it because the townspeople said so.
There any other discussion? The next item held was miscellaneous. Someone like to speak on that?
I just have a question. Can you tell me what the salary, the $10,000 salary is going to be? Where's it going to be expanded? Do we know? Is it like a special projects manager? Uh, I'm not familiar with it, to be honest with you, so I just...
What budget are you in?
I'm under miscellaneous, 2699. You guys went from $5,000 to $10,000 under salaries for miscellaneous. Just looking for an explanation. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Moderator threw you to the town meeting. You established a stabilization fund for compensated absences tonight. However, to access that money, you have to go to town meeting. To bridge us over that until the Fall Town Meeting, we put $10,000 in this account for compensated absences. It's just a bridge to get us over until we get to the stabilization and we know exactly how much we need. Because there will not be a town meeting between now and the fall. And we do have certain people retiring after July 1 that we're going to have to pay for compensated absences.
No, and it's a wonderful explanation. But don't you think that 150,000 reserve fund would have got us there as well without putting another 10,000 in this? And are you going to promise me right now that next year this miscellaneous line item is not in our budget? If it's only a bridge, I only need to cross it once, correct?
So the, so for the record, the increase is $5,000, Mr. Rockliff. And your point is well taken. Reserve fund could have been used for that $5,000. And the chief's retirement is going to cost you more than that and is buyout of his vacation. Just saying.
But there's been kind of a buzz around town that somehow or another, I'm trying to screw over the town of Acushnet by retiring shortly, by retiring after the beginning of the fiscal year. I have a contract. I've had a contract with the town for the last 19 years that the Board of Selectmen negotiate. And then they vote to approve and two of the three sign. Two of the three signing after they vote for it. And in that contract, it says at the time of separation, I would be entitled to whatever unused vacation time exists. So now, so you know, when you retire in the Bristol County system, it takes three months from your last day of employment until your first paycheck comes in. So every cop, every firefighter, every town employee looks at their personal finances and says, what do I need to do in order to provide that bridge, Gary? From the last paycheck until my family can count on the pension check coming in. So I plan on retiring July 8. I was going to retire in September, but my kids are heading off to college and I'd like to have the summer with them. So apparently, it was okay for me to leave in September and cash out my unused vacation time. But for some reason, according to the Town Administrator, discussions have been held about penalizing me, penalizing me in some way if I retire eight days into the fiscal year. So my comment to that was, if you wanted it badly enough, they should have put it in my contract. I've been chief for 19 years. There's been plenty of time to look at a contract and say, you know what, Gallagher? We don't want you to work eight days into the fiscal year and then cash out. Like every other cop, firefighter, public workers employee does in order to take care of their family. But somehow, this year, I'm being singled out. I don't appreciate it. I don't like the reference that somehow or another I'm putting a gun to your back and holding you off. So if there's anyone, anyone in this town meeting that would like to address this with me, then let's do that. The rumors are floating about. I just had a reporter ask me if I'm being forced out early. Maybe we could ask the Town Administrator if that conversation's ever been brought up in his office about trying to get rid of me before the end of the fiscal year so they wouldn't have to pay out the $10,000 in unused vacation time. Well, I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, I have enough trust in you. The applause that you gave today... The town employees who I am nothing but respectful, I've worked alongside with, and some people that I love. And they talk about low morale and they talk about the revolving door. Figure it out.
Chief, as you know, the conversation you and I have in my office, I assured you that your contract was valid and that all that money was due to you.
You get, Mr. Kelly, I appreciate that, I respect you for that. But you also told me the comment about getting rid of me before the end of the fiscal year was also referenced. And I told you that that should not have even been discussed in the Town Administrator's office. I'm heartbroken by that.
I told you, as a matter of fact, to tell you what was going on and to assure you that your contract was valid and that as far as I was concerned, you were going to get your buy.
Hey Les, this was not my intention to get this thing going here. I just wanted to know where that $10 grand was being spent. Can, uh, can I ask to move my own hole?
I'm, I'm just about to put an end to this debate.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the operating budget and capital improvement budget. Article 17. Finance Committee recommendation on all these articles.
Finance Committee recommends all these articles are approved.
I think we've discussed this to the nth degree. Is there anyone else that would like to discuss anything before we put it to a vote?
We love you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All those in favor of Article 17, please raise your green flag. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to operate the golf called Enterprise Fund as shown below. Reserve fund, $100,000. Salary, $629,256. Operation and maintenance, $640,246. Debt service, $340,500. A total of $1,710,200. The sum to be raised as follows. All center revenue, $1,610,200. And $100,000 of golf contained earnings for a total of $1,710,200. Or take any other action thereafter or in relation thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends Article 18 approved.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Gail Rogers, Peach Blossom Road. Let me back up. My belief is that taxpayer money is being used to support the golf budget. I have spoken with prior select people. I had spoken with a former Town Administrator. I have spoken with a current member of the board. And basically, my belief has been confirmed. Now, to the extent that I attended a golf committee meeting probably in February at this point, and I raised a question about how the DPW is being reimbursed for labor where they do work at the golf course. And I was told that they do not reimburse them for labor. So, and whenever the DPW is working there, however often that is or however little it is, it is, if the money to pay the labor is not coming out of their budget, then it's coming out of, out of the general fund. It's coming out of the DPW budget. So I would just really like to have a member of the Board of Selectmen confirm for me that the medical costs, the pension costs are not being paid for by the golf enterprise fund. So that's my question.
Thank you. And Mr. Moderator, I'll address that. Mrs. Rogers, we had this conversation in your living room. And I will say that indirect costs are coming out of taxpayer money. About $20, $25 per household. Golf course, the beach to COVID was not making any money. Plus, they still owe about $1.35 million on the note. So at that, it's been the practice over the last few years that the town does pick up the indirect costs. So you have your confirmation to the townspeople that we are paying about $20 to $25 per household to supplement the indirect costs, the healthcare, the insurances. Town Administrator, because, you know, he does some work writing letters or doing administrative chores. And I have expressed to the golf committee that after, in seven years, when they finally pay the cost off, that indirect costs will be on the table. And we will take them out of the taxpayers', uh, money. We won't take them out of the taxpayer's money anymore. But to help the golf course survive, it's been the practice to pay these fees. Also, DPW working at the golf course. Just want to put things in perspective, that they're not down there every week cutting grass, cutting trees, digging up, putting in new car paths, that sort of thing. They're there when needed and they save us money. I believe they save us money by doing the work. Otherwise, they'd have to go out and get three bays of prevailing waves to put in a car path. And then DPW also helps other places in town, like Pollock Park and like soccer fields behind. And the golf course helps the soccer fields behind the school here. So being in a small community, I understand what you're saying. That, you know, there are thieves, there are things in the gray area. But, you know, we're also a sense of community. And I'm not going to start trying to the golf course to pay for the DPW for helping us out and saving us money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeRoches. As long as all the enterprise funds are being treated the same, I, I don't disagree. I think if an enterprise fund is not fully covering its expenses, that that ought to be disclosed at this town meeting. And the amount of taxpayer funds should also be disclosed. I don't have an issue with it. I'm just saying, you're kind of going along your merry way and these things are being done. And they're not supposed to be, I'm not sure it's illegal, but an enterprise fund is supposed to be completely independent. And I just thank you for your verification. I do think the, whatever the amount is, should be disclosed in the relay at this meeting. I do think whatever the amount is, should be disclosed in the relay at this meeting. Thank you.[601.12][601.12](APPLAUSE).
Is there any other discussion regarding the golf enterprise fund? Hearing none, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 19, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to operate the sewer enterprise fund as shown below. Reserve fund, $60,000. Salaries, $85,579. Operations and maintenance, $654,400, for a total of $799,979. Money to be raised from sewer revenues, $739,979. And sewer retained earnings of $60,000, for a total of $799,979. Or take any other action thereafter or in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I move Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I need a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unopposed.
Any discussion?
If this passes, what's the new rate for sewer?
Mr. Rockliff, please put your comments through the moderator.
I'm trying to save the time. Everybody knows who I am, but now. Gary Rockliff, 74 Mackaway, if we pass this, what's the new rate, please?
So, Mr. Mr. Manad and Mr. Silver hasn't come to the board of selectmen yet, but I did see a late increase in the sewer budget on the amount of $55,000 paid to the city in New Bedford. So there's some questions around that, and there's no explanation yet by Mr. Manad and Mr. Silver with the board, but that came in late, and you're right, the answer to that is a lot higher. I'm anticipating that $55,000 would probably add 75 cents to a dollar on the rate.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion regarding Article 19? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 20, appropriate transfer of the following sums from available listed funds or any or all of the following capital improvement projects and purchases, or take any other action thereafter. Public Works Highway have a request for a 10-wheel sander plow truck in the amount of $280,000. Source is free cash. Also, Public Works Highway, $50,000 for a slide-in sander. This would go in the back of a truck to enable trucks to sand as well as plow, also from free cash. The police, 24 less lethal conducted electrical weapons, whether it's a fancy term for tasers, $86,400, also from free cash. Police, computer workstations and associated software, $9,500 for the purchase, installation, and configuration of replacement workstations and associated equipment, that also comes from free cash. The schools, $15,000 for preventive maintenance and repair to the roofs, source is free cash. Schools, repair and installation of new surface to the parking lots, $45,000. Materials to be purchased, labor is provided by the DPW, source is free cash. Emergency management, replacement of a failing furnace and associated heating ducts, $16,000. Source is free cash. Fire, breathing apparatus, $320,000 from the ambulance receipt fund. Historical committee, fencing repair and replacement at the Long Plain Museum, $3,500. This would come from CPC funds. Historical committee, replace, install windows at the Long Plain Museum, it would become more energy efficient.
Mr. Moderator, none of the CPC articles are being taken up, they never met. The motion, the motion is, I guess, A through H.
CPC did not have their meeting prior.
They did not.
So, Mr. Moderator, I move items A through H of Article 20 as printed in the warrant. Do I have a motion, is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends these articles unopposed.
Is there any discussion on any of these articles, any of these requests?
Can I get a free cash total, please?
You know, Mr. Moderator, you know, Mr. Rockliff, I appreciate your conversation, but the shout-out from the seats is getting a little annoying. So please follow protocol.
The money that we're using of free cash for the whole meeting, just this article, all I want is one simple number. How much free cash do we have?
Mr. Rockliff.
It's my right, I'm a taxpayer.
And I would like you to follow protocol and be respectful of the town meeting, please.
You're being disruptive to the meeting.
Why don't you give him a chance to add it up?
He doesn't have to add it up. I want the total figure for the whole pile of free cash that's sitting on the table tonight. That's the question I'm asking. Want to know how much free cash for the whole.
They'll get you the number.
Is it fair, Mr. Rockliff, to expect it may take a little time to get that number?
At the end of the meeting, we should be doing it, shouldn't we? Don't we always have that number at the end?
Is there any other discussion on Article 20?
The remaining number for free cash is $1,900. Free cash was certified at $1,641,166.
Okay. That's the number I wanted, thank you.
Is there any further discussion concerning Article 20? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 20, please raise your green card. Article passes with opposition. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from free cash or otherwise provide the sum of $8,000 for the Board of Assessors to purchase Near Map software to bring together geospatial and construction data sets into a common operating environment to be utilized for assessment information of real estate values for tax purposes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $8,000 for the Board of Assessors to purchase Near Map software to bring together geospatial and construction data sets into a common operating environment to be utilized for assessment information of real estate values for tax purposes.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the free cash totals include this warrant article and the next
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unopposed.
Any discussion on Article 21? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 22, this is a lengthy article, I'll try to paraphrase it to save everyone some time. Town wants to place $20,000 to fund an elder community services program. In essence, this is available to resident property owners who have attained the age of 60 years to be used to reduce their real estate property taxes for the property in which the elderly owner resides. Requirements are originated by the Board of Selectmen after receiving the recommendations from the Council on Aging. It's limited to elderly residents of the town who own property and are willing and able to provide services to the town. They will receive compensation at the rate of $8 an hour for each hour of service rendered for a total not to exceed $1,500 in any calendar year. They must agree in writing prior to participating in the program to receive the compensation in the form of a voucher to be presented to the treasurer and tax collector to be applied to the real estate obligations of the participant for the property in which the participant resides. And the next statement says this will be minus state and federal taxes. People will be selected for participation in this program on a first-come, first-served basis. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I move the town vote Article 22 as printed in the warrant to fund said appropriation transfer of $20,000 from free cash.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unopposed.
Hearing no discussion, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 22, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 23, see if the town will vote to accept for all boards, committees, or commissions while holding adjudicary hearing in the town the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23D, which provides that a member of board's committee or commission, when holding an adjudicatory hearing, shall not be disqualified from voting in the matter solely due to that member's absence from no more than a single session of the hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received, provided that certain conditions as established by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23D, are met. In essence, if someone of a board or a commission misses no more than one meeting, they're still allowed to vote in the final income of the subject matter discussed. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommend this article unopposed.
Any discussion?
Could we get a clear explanation of...
Can you please approach the podium, Mr. Rockliff?
Gary Rockliff, 74 Mackaway, can I, we just got an explanation of why we want the article all of a sudden, or what led up to us maybe wanting this article? I don't know the particulars, that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Rockliff, I will address your question, please. Okay. Well, if you want me, I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
Just seeing if you're answering the status factory out of state seated.
Okay, this is, this is, what we're being asked to do is adopt what is called the Mullen Rule. Boards sometimes have meetings that extend over many weeks before a decision is made. This rule, adoption, will let it be that if a board member misses a meeting, he or she is able to watch it on video and be able to vote for it at the end of the proceedings. Right now, if a board member misses a meeting, they're not able to vote on it, and that could cause, if enough members miss, if it spreads out long enough over four weeks, and say, three individual people miss at different weeks, then you wouldn't be able to have a quorum, and the discussion wouldn't be able to be voted on by the commission. So what this enables the board members or commission members to do is to, if they can only miss once, but they're able to view the video, and then they're able to vote at the end of the proceedings.
Okay, so that'd be like all the boards, appeals, planning, selectmen?
Selectmen also, and, you know, and I think it's a good thing, because in the past, it's hurt us, and it's hurt a decision, certain decisions that needed to be made. Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion on Article 23? Having none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 23, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Article passes with opposition. Article 24, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws to add a new section, temporary moratorium on the sighting of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, as follows, or act in relation thereto. Town currently has 20 approved large-scale ground-mounted solar installations, completed or under construction. These have involved significant clearcutting of trees and ground vegetation and been located in close proximity to abutting residential neighborhoods. An installation in a budding town may clear the threat of further solar development to scenic vistas and recreational areas. These large-scale installations are defined as in excess of 25 kilowatt-rated nameplate capacity structurally mounted on the ground, and are allowed by special permit in the residential, A, business village, and business commercial districts. Existing regulations have proved inadequate for protecting the town's natural resources and mitigating other negative effects of large-scale ground-mounted solar facilities. So, in essence, they are looking for a temporary moratorium of 180 days so they can adequately establish some bylaws to prevent what's going on with adverse effects to the scenery and Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws to add a new Section 24, temporary moratorium on the sighting of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommend this article unopposed.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Oh, yes, Mr. Wimmer.
This article originated with the Board of Selectmen. We had talked about this a great deal and advanced it to the planning board, as we stated here. While we think solar is a, you know, relatively good thing, the proliferation and the expediency which has taken place has really caused a great deal of harm to our vegetation and forestry in town, so we think it's time to pump the brakes, collect data, come back with a better recommendation in the fall. collect data, come back with a better recommendation in the fall.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Pimentel, town planner, meet everybody. So I was brought on this past new fiscal year. When I was brought on, there was influx of solar fields and even prior to that, and numerous complaints coming into my office from residents complaining about the number of trees that are being cut down along with how this is impacting their views of a cushion that we're a rural community and we want to maintain those characteristics of being a rural community. I believe setting up 180-day moratorium on this would give the planning board, myself, and working with the Board of Selectmen, an opportunity to be able to approach the town at a fall town meeting with an appropriate bylaw to regulate large-scale solar fields moving further.
Can you say what the planning board's report is, please?
Of...
The bottom paragraph.
Mr. Pimentel, I'm in possession of a letter that you wrote to the Board of Selectmen. Folks, the planning board met, had two meetings on this matter. One on April 28th, 2022, and one on May 5th, 2022. And at the second hearing, the planning board voted unanimously five to zero. No one absent to endorse this article at town meeting. Sorry for interrupting. I thought that may help.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Raymond White, 163 Lake Street. The approved solar farms that are already approved, are they going through? Are they getting put on hold?
Yeah, anything that's been approved in the past, Mr. White, is staying in queue. So anything that has been in queue with planning board will continue to move forward. Anything new that comes to planning board, if this passes, will be stopped.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Certainly. Please state your name and address, sir.
Yeah, my name is Mark Moret. I live at 41 Park Drive.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Are you a town resident?
Yes.
Okay.
I just stopped because somebody else was speaking.
Go ahead.
Okay. I totally support the town's spending, putting the moratorium in place with the 20 solar farms. I don't think that that's what we want our town to look like, a quaint town that we built our houses in and moved to, to have solar farms everywhere and have that site. And I happen to be in a butter of one of the proposed solar farms, the access road off of Park Drive. And I've been working with the developer in the town for over a year now and can't seem to get a resolution. The proposal is there's a 12-foot paper street there that they want to turn into a 40-foot-wide access road to access the property back there to build, called the Park Drive Solar Farm. If they do that, and the town allows that, that means the construction equipment would be 13 feet from my garage. I don't think anyone on the board or anyone would want six months of heavy truck 13 feet from their garage in their house. With that being said, they've also told me that they need to approach my property. And I said, no. And they said, well, if we don't, we'll just park the big trailers out front with the logging equipment and the solar panels, and we'll bring them in on smaller vehicles. And instead of a six-month project, it'll be a year project. So that's just saying to me, the developer's saying, we're going to build that, whether you let us use your property or you don't let us use your property. So not only do I support the suspension of the solar farm proposal right now, but I also consider that when you reconsider, that you consider the access roads to get to that property. Because the access road to get into, if you've never been down Park Drive, to get to that road, you have to do some left, right, left, right turns to get. We're talking about the safety in the residential area that's developed, bringing those massive trucks in and out of that area.
Sir, I'm going to have to interrupt you.
Yes.
Is this, this presentation, I take it is your support of this article?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And in closing, I'd also ask what the exit plan is for all these solar farms. I've asked that question at town meetings, and I've never really got a response. After the 20- or 25-year lifespan of the solar farm, what happens to that development?
I believe we do have a decommissioning strategy in town. I don't know if anybody would care to speak to that. Mr. Pimentel, you have the floor.
So there is currently a decommissioning strategy in place that the town has adopted. I understand, Mr. Gaspar, you worked heavily on this. So with every solar field, they are required to post a decommissioning bond. Every time we get a site plan for a solar field, that goes out to a third-party engineer. The engineer reviews the plans, and more often than not, they include an escalator on the decommissioning price. From that point on, before a developer is allowed to acquire a building permit, they're required to post decommissioning with the town. The town holds on to the decommissioning funds for 20 years. At the point that the solar field has reached its lifetime, we send a letter to the developer, letting them know that we are either going to use those funds to remove it ourselves and restore the land to its original state, or they have the opportunity to return the land to its original state.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel. Is there any other discussion regarding Article 24?
Deborah Madera, 616 Main Street. I guess I'm wondering if we were behind the eight ball and that's why all these are approved and gone through. I have gone to some meetings to fight some of the solar farms in town. It seemed like there was nothing that could prevent them from happening. Wetlands, wildlife, it didn't seem to matter. Basically, it was with the planning board, well, if you don't like it, buy the land yourself and save it. So those were the responses I got. So I have one proposal that will be near me. And I really wish that we could go back and look at some of these plans that have been approved that I don't think they should be grandfathered in. It seems like we were behind the eight ball. I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but it seems like maybe these should have been looked at long before all these were approved. I'm wondering if there's any way that that could be changed in this bylaw, that we go back and look at the ones that have been approved. Once that land's gone, it's gone forever. And we're talking some hefty acres of land. So just wondering if that could be looked at again.
Mr. Pimentel?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to apologize. I missed your statement. I'm going to have to apologize. I missed your statement. Someone was having a conversation with me at the time.
Mr. Moderator, the issue is whether approved ground solar arrays that have been approved by the board, is there any way that that approval can be changed or rescinded?
Yes, so within our 31 conditions that we have with the solar fields, if the planning board finds that it is a detriment to the town and its residents, they have the right to bring those developers back in front of the planning board and make adjustments that they see adequate.
So you would advise that any resident that is concerned talk to you and the planning board?
I would advise them to contact my office, reach out to me, schedule an appointment. I will gladly sit down with them and address these issues with the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion concerning Article 24?
Elia, 36 Mattel Street. The recent solar plants have been approved. Are we going to benefit out of that as far as the electrical bill being reduced with all these solar panels, farms being installed?
Sir, I don't know if anyone else is experienced or what I am, but I'm having a difficult time hearing you. Could you speak a little?
Okay, sure. Any solar farms that has been approved and it's going to get approved, are we going to benefit on our electrical bill being reduced forward?
Not thus far.
Sir, sir, we need your name and address, please. I couldn't hear you.
Elia, 36 Mattel Street.
Albeca, Lawson Avenue. What's the benefit to a cushionet to put a solar farm in? Is it taxes? Is it more electricity for us? What is it? What's the benefit?
If anyone would like to respond to that?
Mr. Moderator, in my humble opinion, there isn't any. It's only for the developer to make money.
Well, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir. We do receive taxation from solar farms in town. And they're helping, they're put into a capital expense fund that right now is going to be used to pay for the school roof instead of taxation money. So, you know, I mean, I see that as a benefit to it. All the monies that are raised from solar farms, the taxation that the town receives goes into a capital investment fund.
In addition, when, look, when the whole solar farm craze took off, you know, a decade ago or a decade and a half ago, really, the intention was for large parcels of land, not forestry, not with vegetation, but old farmland that could possibly develop into housing, which people are against because of the density. So the alternative was for solar farms, but it has outkicked its coverage. It has gone way beyond the initial scope and the initial plans of the town. So this is what this moratorium is all about, is to pump the brakes for us to take a breath, figure out what the next steps are so we can prepare for the eventual next wave or to be able to curtail some of the things that are happening now. So the initial, you know, the initial intention was to preserve open space, prevent housing from taking place, give folks who've been farming their whole lives the opportunity to convert into solar farming. But it clearly has gone well beyond the initial plans, and that's why we're doing this.
And I would like to add that I support this moratorium. I think it's time for the town to, as Mr. Wann said, put the brakes on and get an understanding of exactly what's happening and come to a decision that's, you know, beneficial to the town instead of pushing things through that might not be as good as we think they are. So, because there are questions to be asked. What do we want our town to look like when we drive down Robinson Road? Do we want to put on our sunglasses and get the glare in our face? Do we want certain kind of screenings? How do we want, how do we want the whole process to happen? And right now, I think people have, you know, we got on the bandwagon. A lot of developers saw a cushion as an opportunity to do things in, which, hey, you know, the land's going to be developed. It's either going to be houses, solar farms, you know, so what is the right decision? I think this gives us the time to really sit down, planning board, gives them the time to sit and think and come up with an idea that will work best for the town. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion concerning Article 24?
Who's going to bear the cost of putting in the road and the rest of the stuff that's going to go down there? There's going to have to be some type of money put up front. Where's that going to come from?
Usually comes from the developer. I don't know, I don't know any instances that taxation's ever been used for putting in a road for a solar farm, sir. I surely would never support that.
Is there any other discussion?
Douglas Thomas, 25 South Main Street. Just a clarification of the 180 days. To my recollection, the meeting that I attended for the solar farm moratorium was 180 days plus there was a factor of the COVID from the pandemic. And there wasn't an actual number, but it was supposed to be added on to the 180 days for this extension. So I'm just looking for a clarification of an actual number.
Doug Pimentel, so the tolling or the extension from COVID that came from the governor's office, that's already on approved permits and already on approved solar fields. So when they get approved, their special permit is for two years. We have numerous solar fields that haven't begun construction yet because they haven't had connection agreements with eversource. And we also have several right now off the top of my head that are reaching their expiration are going to have to petition the planning board again. Putting this 180-day moratorium in place will stall that process and allow the town to adopt regulations.
Is there any other discussion? We will put this to a vote. Hearing no discussion, this will take, will need a two-thirds majority to prevail. All those in favor of Article 24, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The article passes by two-thirds with opposition. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Acushnet official zoning map by rezoning a parcel of land identified in the assessors' records as Map 15, Lot 482 and 534, from the Residential A zoning district to the Residential Village zoning district, or take any other action thereto. Do we have a recommendation from the planning board?
Need a motion?
Doug Pimentel again, speaking behalf of the planning board, the recommendation they had given down. So the public hearing was conducted at 6:30 on April 28th and at 6:00 on May 5th. The planning board voted unanimously five, four, with zero absents to endorse Article 25 at town meeting. In the opinion of the planning board, future development in this area shall require water and sewer testing conducted by a third-party engineer in accordance with Master in Law 44, Section 53G and a half. The board has taken this into consideration with the current age of water and sewer infrastructure running down, running under Pembroke Ave. The board noted the potential extension and development of Nelson Ave, which directly abuts Bradford Street, and that, well, directly abuts, sorry, Pembroke Ave. And extending Bradford Street through Lot 534 would benefit the town and residents for additional fire protection and extend water and sewer connection points to this part of town. During the public hearing, the board accepted comments from the public addressing history of the site as a junkyard and contamination concerns. The planning board discussed the process. Developers are required to take through Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise known as DEP, for the remediation of contaminated soil. Any future development will require a project proponent to hire a licensed site professional, otherwise known as LSP, and work directly with DEP for the cleanup of any contamination.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I guess I'll make the motion. It's usually done by the planning board. I'll move the town vote to amend the town of Acushnet official zoning map by rezoning a parcel of land identified in assessors' records as Map 15, Lots 482 and 534, from the Residential A zoning district to the Residential Village zoning district as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unopposed.
Is there any further discussion regarding Article 25?
Yes. My name is Diane Abram. I live Pembroke Avenue. I have a problem with this. If you're going to put 13 more houses on the top of Pembroke Ave, If you're going to put 13 more houses on the top of Pembroke Avenue, it's going to be a very dangerous situation. That Nelson Street is a very small, small street. It's going to go right alongside of a woman's property to Branscombe Street. And Pembroke right now is a big cutoff for everyone that lives off Wing Road. It's a dangerous street. It's a narrow street. It needs so much repair. And I just think the safety of the neighborhood is in jeopardy by putting that many houses up in that area. It was an old junkyard many, many years ago, and I'm not for progress, and I know taxes will help the town. However, my concern is the safety of the children on that street. It's a narrow street. It's much, much too traffic-y. And I just think people have to think about the safety rather than the dollar. As far as I know, health is and wealth do not compete with each other. I think we have to think of the neighbors, think of the children. If you're going to widen that street and make it more accessible, fine. But what you're saying, you're going to make Nelson Street a cutoff on Branscombe? I think you need to look at Nelson Street and see what Nelson Street really is. You're only talking about a, maybe a quarter, not even a quarter, an eighth of a mile to James Street. I just think, I'm not against building houses at all, but I'm just concerned with the safety of that neighborhood. Thank you. I'm sorry for bringing this up, but that's how I feel.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams.
Hi. My name is Jamie Marinelli, 82 Pembroke Ave. I'm against that also. Nelson Ave is very narrow. And who's going to pay for that? The developers going to pay for that to Bradford Street, or is it going to be the taxpayers?
So, Mr. Moderator, I don't know if Doug introduced himself to the audience, but the gentleman that keeps coming to the microphone, ladies and gentlemen, he's the new town plan, Doug Pimental.
So, in the case for Nelson Avenue and to connect Bradford Street to Nelson Ave, that would require the developer to pay for that portion of development. Currently, as it stands, Bradford Street is a pre-existing way before subdivision control law. So, that portion where lot 482 currently is, that's being developed currently, it falls under A and R subdivision, or A and R approvals. In terms of across the street at 534, that would, that would go through as a subdivision of land. And this is for development potential. This isn't saying that there's going to be 10 to 13 houses that go out there. This is just targeting local parts of town that we could increase growth at some point in time.
Another question is, the water line on that street, 75 years old? Can we have that looked at too also? I have no other questions.
As part of the planning board's recommendation, it would, water and sewer testing would have to be conducted for Pembroke Ave. If it's deemed insufficient to supply water and sewer pressure to those houses and downstream, people further down Pembroke Ave, then that would be up to the developer to improve whatever water and infrastructure needs to be improved at that time.
Is there any other discussion regarding Article 25?
Mr. Moderator, Bradford Street has its own new water line and sewer line. It's brand new. What's on Pembroke is probably older, but they have a brand new sewer and water line there. And it's, it's not, they're not going to develop 13 houses. That's not accurate. And after attending two planning board meetings, which they were far 100%, all, all members voted to go with this change. Thank you.
My name again is Diane Abram. I live on Pembroke Avenue. I'm not here to argue that 10 or 13 houses or whatever they're saying. But I understand it's 10. Okay, 10. 10 or 13 is not going to make a difference. I wish you people would, if it was approved by everyone, the selectmen and everyone else, you need to go up the top of Pembroke Avenue and look and see what I'm saying. I'm not saying anything that's not the truth. It's a very narrow street. And yes, Branscombe Street is a brand-new street to the right of Pembroke Avenue. There's two houses there right now, in which the builder has provided sewerage, which is fine. But my concern is using Pembroke Avenue as a road for everyone to go up and down is not fair to the neighborhood. You have children. Aren't you concerned with your children of the neighborhood? I wish every selectman would go there and look at what I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm against building. I'm not. I'm just against putting too much housing up there that the neighborhood cannot control. This winter, there was a water main break on Pembroke Avenue. It took three, and I understand, it took three months for them to fill those holes in. And I know it's difficult. The town is a small town, but I know we need the money. But do you care about the health and welfare of the children and people in that neighborhood? I would hope you do. That is my concern. I'm not against building. I know the people that are building it, and I like them. They're very nice people. However, I'm concerned with the neighborhood and the children on that street. I wish you, every one of you would go up there and look at the area yourself and see what I'm saying. Look at Nelson Street. Look what Nelson Street's going to be. And then you people can tell me this is the right thing to do. If you want to build four houses, five houses, six houses, maybe. But 10 or more, I'm sorry, it's wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasman.
So, the board of selectmen have nothing to do with this. This is the planning board, and it's vetted at the planning board. That's the time to take up the issues with what's going on, how many houses are being developed. I don't know how many house lots are going at the top of that road. I know it's being rezoned. That was proposed by the developer to the planning board. I don't know if it's four more houses, six more houses. I don't think it's 10 or 15 houses. But if there's anybody here, Mr. Pimental, if you can inform the folks, and that lady's concerns are real. And just so you know, ma'am, I'm very familiar with your neighborhood, because I grew up with some friends that live in that neighborhood, and I used to hang out there when I was a teenager. So, I'm very familiar with that neighborhood and how dense it already is and how tight those roads are.
So, currently, you're correct. There's no development plans for 534. 42 is currently has plans to be developed. It is currently a contaminated piece of land. So, the developer's options are he abandons it, the town takes over the land, and we are fined by DEP. The other options are he can build three or four homes, from what my understanding are, is in, on, on that parcel. It's going to upgrade the home values in that neighborhood. It is also going to maintain the same neighborhood characteristic for that part of town.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I see the building inspector is here. I don't know if he'd like to speak on this, if it's okay.
Mr. Merritt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bradford Street, the way it's been developed to a point, has two houses on it. There's an additional lot that will be built when they're ready to move forward. Across the street in the area that we're looking at rezoning, there's only 32,000 square feet. There's only enough property there to build three additional houses. To me, it's a very small price to pay for getting that property cleaned up. Prior to them taking over this piece of property, it was a terrible, terrible junkyard. There were, there were trees actually growing through some of the houses that were there. The owner of it passed away a number of years ago, and his widow did a, a really good job helping clean it up. But it is what it is. She had a 21E done on the property. Property came back after being tested, that there is contamination in the soil, and, and the current owners would like to be able to remove that soil. However, there's a cost associated with that, and helping to develop that and change the zoning there would allow them to do that and make that area a little bit better. There are other areas along Pembroke which could be a concern in development, but that, that one I don't believe is. I think it's a good piece of property, and I think that we should allow them to do something. Otherwise, there's only one house lot there, and it's just not enough financing allowed to be able to clean up that property with just one house lot.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt.
I wish you'd look at the warrant. It says 10 to 13 houses conforming. So, if it says 10 to 13, look at the writing. It's in writing. I'm not making this up. 10 to 13 houses. That's, if they change the size of the lots, they can build more houses. That's all I'm saying. And like I said, I'm not against building houses or revenue for the town. I just want a safe neighborhood.
Is there any other discussion regarding Article 25?
Just one more time. They're not going to build 10 to 13 houses. This is just changing one side of the street to the other to make it all residential. It's a split, the way it's, the, the bylaws are written now are not correct for them to do what they want to do and clean up the junkyard. That was a disaster. It, it's going to cost probably $200,000 to clean it. You'll have a nice, clean neighborhood instead of a mess. That's what they're trying to accomplish. And for everybody to know, they're my grandsons. So, that's why I'm so involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, how about you folks? We have one more?
Hi, Cheryl Hall, 58 South Main Street. It's a simple question. The way it's worded, as she said, indicates 10 to 14 or 10 to 13 houses. If that's not accurate, then maybe this gets tabled until the fall and it's rewritten correctly.
Excuse me, Ms. Hall. People having difficulty hearing you.
Really? Oh, that's a big problem, too. Cheryl Hall, 58 South Main Street. My question is, the way it's worded, it does indicate 10 to 13 additional houses, potential houses. If that's not correct, as this gentleman's implying, then maybe this is tabled and brought back in the fall when it's written correctly.
Ms. Hall, is that a motion?
Sure.
You need to make that a...
No, indefinitely.
Make a motion to table it to fall? No, I don't have to do that?
Indefinitely postpone.
Indefinitely. Okay. I make a motion to indefinitely postpone this until it's clarified.
Yes, you may. Is there a second? All those in favor? The matter is postponed indefinitely.
Yeah.
It's like infinity and beyond, isn't it? What's indefinitely mean? I thought it meant...
For this being...
Oh.
I don't know. I can't see that far. They're probably construction guys, dude. They're here to shoot down this stormwater thing in the citizen's petition, I'm pretty sure. What do you think this room's so full for? We never have this guy.
I believe we're unable to postpone it to a time certain at this point in time. But, town council?
I don't understand the question. You can indefinitely postpone a motion. It's a, it's a...
We will postpone it indefinitely and move on to Article 26. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Acushnet stormwater bylaw by deleting the present language.
Moderator?
Yes.
What did you just say? We're going to postpone that article?
Yes.
Do we have a two-thirds vote?
Well, we need a majority vote, sir.
Majority?
Yes.
We had a majority.
Article 26. Let's start again. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Acushnet stormwater bylaw by deleting the present language and replacing said language with the following language attached, or take any other action thereto. Is there a conservation agent here?
Unfortunately, Pat can be here with us tonight.
I think I need to make a motion.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Do we?
Okay.
I need a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the general bylaws by deleting the present language of the present stormwater bylaw and inserting new section, Stormwater Management Bylaw, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommended this article, unopposed.
Mr. Pimental?
Yeah, just speak briefly on it. This is coming to compliance with EPA, and we hired an outside third-party engineer to help us come into compliance, MS4, and with EPA. So, this would help the town, sorry, this would help the town long-term avoid fines from EPA. Additionally, this changes the effects of the stormwater bylaw presently that it would have on a homeowner or somebody who's building a home, changes the trigger from 5,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet, where you'd have to pull a stormwater permit. And right, right now, currently, it's running just for a stormwater permit, about $20,000. So, this would be a huge cost saving for the resident of Acushnet.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasman.
I'd like to, I'd like to try to clarify some confusion. I've gotten from some folks from, from the town. And that confusion is, I think Mr. Pimental just alluded to, we're going from 5,000 to 40,000. What I hold here in my hands is the motion from May 10, 2021. And on Article 15, we amended the stormwater bylaw already. And if Ms. Labonte or town council wants to say different, that's fine. I'm willing to accept it. However, the amendment was very simple, plain in nature. And it says, "Any land disturbing activity resulting in land disturbance of 5,000s crossed out, 40,000 square feet or more. Development or redevelopment involving multiple separate activities, discontinuous locations on different schedules if the activities are a part of a larger common plan of development that altogether disturbs 5,000s crossed out, 40,000 square feet is put in. Paving another change in surface material of an area of 5,000s crossed out, 10,000 square feet or more, causing a significant reduction of permeability or increase of runoff. Construction of a new drainage system, alteration of a new drainage system serving as a drainage area more than 5,000s crossed out, 10,000 square feet is in. Any other activity altering the surface of an area exceeding 5,000s crossed out, 40,000 square feet, that will or may result in increased stormwater runoff following the, the property into a public way or municipal stormwater system." So, I bring that up because I know a lot of people are confused, thinking that the 5,000's too stringent on doing housing development and things of that nature. And I think there's some comment that was... And I think there's some comment that was being thrown out there. I talked to several residents and this is very confusing for a lot of different people, that this wasn't adopted. As far as I'm concerned, unless the town clerk can tell me something different, that Article 15 last year wasn't adopted because it was illegal, we already got the 40,000 square feet. And all I want to do is make that announcement to all you folks in the room, because I know some of you are small developers and you're concerned about the 5,000 square feet of any storm, land disturbance, only 5,000 square feet. I'm pretty sure we brought it up to 40,000 last year. That's all I have to say for now.
What are you looking at?
Is there any other discussion on Article 26?
16 Rainy Street. I have one question, because they ran out of warrants. So I really didn't get to read the warrant about what this is all about. And because I think there are some other people besides me that didn't get a warrant, until we can all find out what this is and get to read it, I think this should be tabled until this can be brought up, that we can all read about this, everyone who wants to, not just be pushed down and voted on without everyone having a proper chance to read about what was in the warrant. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this.
The motion's been made to table. This is going to take a two-thirds vote, ladies and gentlemen.
I think we're trying to make some clarification. Mr. Kelly's getting text messages from the conservation agent, I believe, and Ms. Labonte's trying to look it up to see if there's some comments that I'm wrong, that this vote that I hold in my hand didn't take place.
And, well...
I know.
We had a motion. Is there a discussion for the motion?
Yeah.
Why? Opening ourselves up to... Opening ourselves up to non-compliance.
Was not advertised correctly?
Let's take about a 10-minute recess.
Oh, no, this game on, man.
Yeah, game on.
Why don't you tell me how you really feel?
There's a motion. There's a motion to table. You have to take that up. You have to take it, huh?
My name's Kevin Smith. I'm from Lawson, 161 Lawson Avenue. There is a motion on the floor and a second. You have to have a vote. Unless he rescinds his motion, you have to have a vote.
We got it. We're about to take it.
Give him this and explain to me where it says that in this part.
We're going to vote. Again, as I said, it's a two-thirds necessary to table it. All those in favor of tabling Article 26, please raise your card. Those opposed? The article is tabled by two-thirds.
Table it.
Table the article.
No, 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 it's EPA. It'll die with it. I'd have done an indefinite...
An MS4 permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. Well, hey, I'm just saying, that had to do with what I had to sign last year.
Let's really get thrown.
Signing the MS4 permit.
Article 27. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Akushnet general bylaws. Article 6, Soil Conservation of the Town of Akushnet, by deleting the present language and replacing said language with the following language attached or take any other action thereto. Now, there is an attachment that was available to you on the table when you came in entitled Appendix 4, and this was, get into the specific details of this article. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Table?
Absolutely.
I need the, I need the name, sir, who made the...
Chip James, 29 Tracy Street.
This is a straightforward majority vote. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely?
No. Motion to table.
Indefinitely.
Not a motion to table, it's a motion to...
Wait, hang on a second. Let me see, is that debatable? Yes.
Nope. No, hey, there's no conversation, Les.
No, it's debatable.
No, no, motion to table, ain't it?
Motion to postpone.
We will entertain debate, yes.
I just want to make a clarification on this vote. I understand that. I just want to make a clarification. This vote was to modify the existing bylaw. So really, it doesn't change anything. That's correct, right? The modification, the bylaw that was voted by town meeting last year is in effect with the current new rules, that they have to go before the Soil Board for the permits and everything else. So nothing has changed.
Just the changes that were here would be changed.
Won't be in there.
We will entertain debate on this before we vote. It is debatable.
It was a motion to postpone indefinitely.
The motion was to postpone indefinitely, not to table.
He isn't running the meeting.
Now we're shooting.
Told you this was going to be a shift. Get up to the microphone.
Who are you?
The superseding motion is the motion to postpone indefinitely, which is debatable.
Unless, unless the, Mr. Dakin, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can the original person that made the motion to postpone indefinitely rescind that motion and go with the motion to table as somebody else was doing? I think it has to be...
How can you do that? The motion was made.
It is not...
There was an initial motion made. It needs to be rectified, one way or the other.
The motion was the...
The initial motion was from Bob Brown, who said to table it. Bob Brown did not approach...
One that you recognized was a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Mr.?
I did that, I definitely...
Mr.? Point of order, please. Mr. Brown did not approach, the podium did not identify himself. Postpone indefinitely is debatable and cannot be...
Mr. Moderator? I want to make sure everyone can hear me, okay? Mr. Moderator, I'm here tonight to present the citizen's petition to amend certain language to the Town of Akushnet Soil Conservation Bylaw.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could we have your name and address, please?
Deborah Polchepak, 38 Clifford Street.
Thank you.
For too many years, PJ Keating has been either ignoring or finding ways to work around the Soil Conservation Bylaw. The changes proposed by this citizen's petition only seek to further clarify the language in the bylaw that was already updated at May 10, 2021. Prior to 2021, the updated bylaw was last amended 33 years ago. I mean, everyone has to admit, our town has changed in 33 years. The residents are not trying to shut down the quarry. We're simply asking our fellow residents to support us in the efforts to give the town better definitions, clear language, and the ability to regulate what happens in our town. PJ Keating supporters have been posting misinformation about these changes that we propose. One of the changes is giving the town the ability to regulate the possible importation of millions of tons of contaminated soil to our town and dumped into the quarry. If you support this petition, we're all guaranteed that this is currently unregulated dumping of contaminated soil, hazardous waste, or even solid waste will not happen in our town like it has in others. This will not affect residents from building homes, doing landscaping. It appears that keyboard warriors on Facebook have lied. There are specific exemptions in the 2021 bylaw that protect us, the taxpayers of this town, from others profiteering at the expense of the health and welfare of all of us, the Akushnet residents. A public affairs person sent out a letter to thousands of people, bold-faced lies in distortion, about this bylaw. In our attempt to further define certain language, we, the citizens of Akushnet, feel are not clear enough to hold PJ Keating to the letter of the law and again protect our health, safety, and our environment. Akushnet's a wonderful town. I've lived here 25 years. I love the town. Over the years, the residents of the town have supported each other. I have attended town meetings and have always voted to support our schools, police, fire departments, budgets, and requests. Please support these efforts by the citizens of Akushnet that truly care about the next 33 years of soil removing and filling. Please don't buy into the misinformation. It's not truthful. Someone's work has been in detail to derail our petition? Please make the right choice. Choose to stop the misimportation of millions of tons of contaminated soil. Please choose vote, stop the importation of hazardous waste. Please vote to stop the damage to our roads from overweight trucks. Please vote to stop the consistent legal battles with the company that reported a net profit of $19 billion last year. Keating cost us, the taxpayers, hundreds of thousands of dollars just because they refused to comply with our bylaws. This is our town. Despite being ordered by a judge, despite being ordered by a judge to obtain a soil conservation permit from the town, they are ignoring the judge. Imagine a company that's so brazen, so defiant, that they can ignore a judge's decision. Hmm. Unless we tighten up our regulations and make it clear and easily enforce our roads, we will become worse, the worst year unless we, the taxpayers, vote to spend tax dollars on fixing the roads. Please use common sense, protect our town, protect our health, protect our environment, support the citizen's petition. Thank you.
Christian Assuz, Alora Kinnapp. I'd like to reiterate what the selectmen were, I'd like to reiterate what the selectmen were discussing earlier about the moratorium, about maintaining the rural character of the Town of Akushnet. So, so how come a moratorium on solar panels that really do not create any hazards whatsoever are so significant because, God forbid, someone has to look out their window at a solar panel when I can't even sit in my yard for hours on end because continuous contamination's being produced at a company that's been allowed to get out of hand? How do you justify that, Mr. Wonar? I ask you. Christian.
I'm asking you personally.
With all due respects, okay? I'm being sued by PJ Keating. Hold on, hold on.
It's not a question.
I get the floor, okay? I'm being sued personally by PJ Keating for allegedly trying to close them down. So I just want to set the table straight here, okay? As far as the citizen's petition goes, it wasn't discussed with the Soil Board. I'm asking, I'd like to ask you, who filed the citizen's petition? Who wrote that? Did you write it?
No, I personally did not.
Who, who here wrote it?
It was put together, it was written. Right.
Okay, I'm just asking, who wrote, who actually wrote it?
It was a cooperative effort.
But where did you get the information from? Because it wasn't vetted, it wasn't brought to the Soil Board and asked our opinion or gone through that process. So I'm just curious, who actually wrote it?
Do we have to seek permission? Right. Does that matter?
Hold on, you asked a question. Hold on. You asked a question, so I'm asking the question, because I'd like to know the information. You cooperated, where did you get your information from?
It's from, we have to ask? General research, general research.
I don't know, I'm, I'm asking the...
It's a huge industry. You can get, you can get information from multiple towns, multiple agencies.
As a citizen's petition, I think it's, it would be helpful to provide that information to the citizenry here as to where you got the information, what it's rooted in, what your research was, because I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what anybody else does, either.
And I still don't know your opinion. You haven't, you haven't told me.
Based on what? What's the question? I don't know the question.
Would you think that solar panels are friendlier for our environment or the facility at PJ Keating is what I'm asking you?
Christian, what do you, what do you think?
Excuse me.
I don't know your opinion.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Go ahead.
The motion on the floor is whether or not to postpone indefinitely, and that's where the debate and the conversation should be headed. So let's do that.
Well, personally, I'd rather see PJ Keating covered in solar panels than asphalt.
Cheryl Hall, 58 South Main Street. So I just want to remind everyone in this room when we're considering, I want to remind everyone when we are considering postponing this discussion and vote, that what we've been going through for the last couple of years, I myself went to, you know, board of health meetings and annual meetings to discuss the issues over at PJ Keating. I was part of a small group that was actually meeting with PJ Keating, trying to work collaboratively, trying to address the issues in the neighborhood. None of it was success. I feel like at this point, we need to take control of what's happening in our town. When I go running down my street and I'm literally in a cloud of dust, it's just simply not okay. It's time for us to make a change.
Ray St. Pierre, 22 Hoback Street. I do have a little bit of a problem because of the English that we're following here and one of them is, they're taking away, it says, "Method removal." So that would be method of removal of any debris that comes out of there. Now we're just going to go for method of earth removal. I don't, we are, I think we're not inclusive in that Section E that maybe we should table, no, actually postpone this, so maybe it's a little bit better written.
Is there any other discussion? A motion to, there's a motion to call. So we will call the vote.
Two-thirds vote.
It's a two-thirds vote?
My question, Norm Fredette, is, again, I didn't get a warrant and I can't read what you guys want us to vote, so I'm in favor of tableing this so we can all get the information.
This is not a motion to table, sir. There was a motion to call the vote. It's time to call the vote and it takes a two-thirds vote. We're voting on whether or not to postpone it indefinitely.
We're voting on whether or not to cut off debate on postponing. See, it's unfortunate because there's no one else.
I don't get it.
The motion on, I guess you called the question.
Which question?
No, just call the question. It's a term of art. And that means after they vote two-thirds...
We are going to vote to call the question, and it will take two-thirds vote. All those in favor of calling the question to end debate? The call, the question was to end debate, as I understand it. And it takes two-thirds vote to do so. To end the debate. On the motion to postpone indefinitely. I can't hear you.
Just the debate.
This is a vote to call the question. You vote to shut off debate, and then you vote on whether to postpone indefinitely.
I thought I said that very same thing, but...
You did. You did.
All right. This is a two-thirds vote to call off debate. All those in favor? Opposed? The debate is ended.
Now a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Now that we ended the debate, we are going to have a motion to postpone indefinitely. That's what was on the floor originally. And this is a majority vote. Is the vote to postpone indefinitely, if you're in favor of that, raise your green cards. It only takes a majority vote. Those opposed? The article is postponed indefinitely. Passes.
Mr. Moderator? I make a motion to adjourn town meeting.
There's a motion to dissolve.
Final recap and a final...
All in favor? The motion to dissolve passes.